I'm gonna need a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll move.
Danita?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fully stand the sign.
Who's fully set?
It's, it's for the computer thing. Need a motion to approve the November 7th and November 1st minutes.
There's one thing in there.
Which one, Rex?
The first one.
Oh, on the 7th, yeah?
Whoever bought that, it's got Tanner, but I bought that snowplow that should be taped.
Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll.
I just looked at Bonn on. Okay.
Other than that, I accepted it.
Danita?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. We've got Josh from IMAG here.
Okay, I've got some maps here, so you guys can follow along. Quite quick off, I looked at everyone, apologize. Start slideshow and then we'll get up. Hi, hello everyone, my name is Josh Fraser, I'm with IMAG Corp. And I did the Britain inspections this year for Buckville County. And I'm gonna give a little review today. So Buckville County, they have seven structures. And this year, we inspected all seven of them. They're on a biannual basis, we inspect them in 2023 and then we'll inspect them again in 2025, 2027, and so on. And there's one post construction in the county. So moving on here, I'm just gonna quickly touch all seven of them, won't be too long. So first structure I'm gonna go for here is 160010. And help me out too, if you guys have names for these structures or by someone's place or wherever you're at. So here we're kind of more in the I'd call it the middle north end of the county. This structure was built in 1975, it's a single span pre-stress, or pre-cast double T. Yeah, 10 miles north, 13 miles west of here. There's a couple pictures of it there. I really have no concerns with this bridge at this time. It's gonna stay illegal loads and there's some minor cracking, but yeah, there's no issues at this one. Moving on, 09174140. So that one would be on the south kind of end of the county. I don't know if there's a name for that one or not.
What do you call this one? By your place.
Oh, Bumpies.
Yeah.
Bridge by Bumpies.
This one's a three-span steel girder bridge, it was built in 1963, 3 miles south and 11.4 miles west of here. There's a couple pictures of it there, you can see the condition of the bridge. This one is in, I would say overall good condition, there's a couple things that I wanted to note on this. So these pictures here, so abutment one, you can see is undermined underneath it. When I was actually in there, in the creek, I'd have a six-foot pole and I could stick it all the way down underneath there. So that's, you know, becoming undermined, you can see the piles underneath there that are still holding it up. I have no, it's not gonna fall down or anything like that, but something that we should look into fixing. And the other picture here is the other thing I'm getting concerned about, you can see the corrosion, these piles are in the water. When the water goes up and down, the piles oxidate and start to rust. It's not too far now where you can't fix it. So I'll actually kind of touch on that at the end of the presentation on maybe doing a preservation slash rehab grant for this. Next one, 180043. Okay, yeah, up in the north end again, yeah, on page two. This one's a three-span, pre-cast double T, built in 1975. Again, I think four of the seven bridges were built in 1975, 11 miles west, 6.8 miles north. Really not much concerns on these bridges, or this bridge here. Yeah, it looks pretty decent, there's some shear cracking that is starting. And that would be here over top of that vent, but it's really early in there, so there's really no concerns at this time. Next one, 184050. This one is another single-span pre-cast double T, built in 1975. 6 miles north, 10.6 miles west, so it's kind of right next to the one I just talked about.
Going up like, Jammin's driveway, yeah. I don't know which one, Danny maybe or something.
Who's this?
Jerry's, yeah.
Can I play? Is this on the on-prem?
It's on one right by Jerry Knipfling's place, right by the yard, we go east there always.
Alright.
Got a couple pictures over here, really I don't have much concerns for this bridge at all. It's in pretty decent condition. It's on Tanner, it has gotten hit by a couple ice storms, you can see that the piles kind of shave off, but that's not overloading or that's not, you know, deterioration that I'm really worried about. Unless we get ice storms every single year, then we'll have to talk about that, but right now, this one, no concerns. Next one. 195144, don't know if this is yours.
Yep, this is at our, on Charlie's place.
The single-span pre-cast double T again, built in 1975, it's 9.5 miles west and 3.4 miles south of here. Couple pictures over there. The only minor thing I found on this one is the pile caps are trying to rotate a little bit. That's something that maybe we'll have to reset in future years, but I don't see enough deterioration on this one. I don't really have any concerns, so. So yeah, well, we're good for another two years until I check it again. Next one. 2400924135. This one's a, we got a name for this one?
Larson.
Larson.
That's a three-span pre-cast double T, again built in 1975, it's 5 miles west, 2.5 miles south of here. I'm showing some pictures here, so there's a side view of the bridge. So this one is posted at 90% of illegal loads. And then you can see, I'll show you a couple pictures here why, and this is one of them. So over top of the vents, there's cracking that is starting and it's falling out. You can see the concrete that's falling out. And this will continue to keep coming out as long as, you know, trucks and heavy loads are going over it. And once it gets past the bent cap here, then the girder will essentially start to settle or fall down. And then that's when the bridge is gonna have to either be closed or we're gonna close those double T deck units. It's not to the point right now where I'm really worried about closure at all, but that's what would happen if it continued to deteriorate at the rate it is now. Here's a couple more pictures. You can see that this piece of concrete is about to pop out from that same thing. It doesn't look like it's going all the way through, but that one's about to go. And then here's another location where you can see the, kind of that angle, shear cracking is what we call it. Here's another picture here, so here's the timber piles that are holding it up. They're just starting to rot at the ground line. When that water comes up and gets into those piles, they start to rot. Over years, and this bridge is 50 years old, so those piles start to rot. And then I have a picture of the wavelength sign. Moving on to the last bridge, 09309130. I'm on the east end, southern east end of the.
Going up the rest well ones.
This is a single-span pre-cast double T structure, built in 1999, 2 miles south, 1.9 miles east of here. And this bridge is in really good condition, I have zero issues at this thing. A couple pictures of it there, you can, you can see that it's doing good. With that, that is all I have for this presentation, do we have any questions?
Okay, so we, we have qualified for bridge replacement, but we have not been approved.
Yeah, so we have, we applied for a bridge, though there's two different bridge replacement programs. And we're specifically talking about that 24135, Larson.
Yeah.
So that one does qualify for replacement. We applied in August, and that was actually a 100% funded program, very competitive, everyone applies for it. And then we did not get a grant for that. So the next step would be, we're looking at next year possibly applying for a preliminary engineering grant, which would be the first step into replacing this. We'll figure out how the hydraulics work there and then what structure would be put in there to make sure we don't flood anyone out up or downstream and make sure it stays the way things are now. So that would be next August, we'll apply for that. Yeah.
But to up our chances.
So, so, so we can apply for this in 2024 no matter what. To up our chances, we'll have to see how this bridge deteriorates over time. So in 2025, I'll take a look at it again. I mean, it has been, I think this is the fourth time, so I've been looking at you guys' bridges for eight years. And this is, I've seen it get worse. And crawling up there, I can, you can see there's more concrete, more, you know, a couple more cracks. It's not like it's jumping where it's getting way worse, but it's just, it's, it's aging, it's deteriorating. So I'll look two years from now and if it's worse, then yeah, we'll have a, we can rate it lower and then we'll have a better shot at it, so.
Now Glenn was asking, maybe, but like, when you're building the bridge, what kind of a bypass would you do? Or would you have to go clear around?
So that's something we can look at when we get into the replacement grant, on if we want to do a temporary structure for people to get around. That is something that we can get 20% from, or we'd have to pay 20%.
And it depends on what kind. If we think we have to make it for trucks.
That's gonna be very expensive.
It's gonna cost a lot of money. If we make it just for cars, it's doomed.
Now, I guess along that line, like from tear down to rebuild, what kind of time period would it be?
So it kind of all depends on who we get for a contractor and how quick the deadline is for them. I would say, it also depends on what structure we end up putting in there, you know, there's a few different types of options there. I'd say the quickest it probably does from bridge tear out to back up would be six months, five, six months. And the longest it would be is a year. Obviously, we hope for the five, six months and we get the right guy.
It'd be one crop season even if it was five or six.
Yeah. Hopefully they start, sometimes they'd like to start like February, so then maybe it's just planning, they can get it back open. So if you get lucky, and that's how it works.
Um, so can we reapply in August?
Yes.
So if we lower it before that time?
So we won't lower it until I get a chance to look at it again in 2025.
Oh, okay.
But for the preliminary engineering grant, we'll, we'll still have a good shot, because we are four bridges out of getting that.
Okay.
And they awarded 16 or 18, so hopefully, we should move up the list and get that grant next year. There are no guarantees, but we should. And then I'll look at it in 2025 and then January of 2026 would be when we can look at applying for a replacement grant.
Okay.
There's also the federal replacement grants that happen in August every year. And those ones were, not every year, this year it was 100% funded.
Yeah, I know.
And that's why we went for that one, and we were, we were probably 20, 25 bridges out of that, there was a lot of people ahead of us in that line. But I, it's free money, we have to apply for that one again, even if we are 20 bridges out of it. We'll apply for that grant again, but to get the big funding, which is state funding, not federal funding, and that, and the county has to apply, or is on the hook for 20% of that. So that one, we're looking at a timeline of applying in 2026.
Alright, so Dan on the bridge at Bumpies, the restoration one.
Yeah.
We have been approved.
Yeah, so, so we did a pre-application for preservation, we have, through the DOT, we applied for that September 1st. They approved us, said you are approved for your pre-application, and now we actually apply for the funding, which is due January, the application is due January 1st. So I actually brought the sheet in front of you there, so you'll have to sign up on that, saying that we can apply for this.
Yes, the chairman signs up on that.
Yes, correct. I don't know if you have to make a motion, I think you do have to make a motion for that too, I believe, so. So yeah, so this is a great.
Chairman, and then we have to.
So, yeah, I think this is a good thing, it'll fix those, I'll go back, so those pictures come back up. So those are the two things, the two main things we're looking at replacing. There's a couple other things on this bridge, like the trees that grow next to it, we'll get rid of those, because those roots like to get underneath things and mess things up. And there's some erosion around the wing walls that we can fix too, and we're gonna try to fix everything on this bridge we can to get it up to as good as it can be at this age. So I think to preserve this, I think it's a pretty decent.
I think if you look, Rex.
And it costs us 46,000.
So you guys will.
This is, this is the proposal.
So the local match, yep, that 122 and.
That will be ours, the grant fund, it's a total of 610,000. And the local match, what we'll have to match is 122,000.
So I'm hoping it's less than that, but I'm preparing for worst case scenario, because I don't want to apply for this grant. And then worst case scenario comes on, then we're short, and then we're like, well, now we have to wait to apply two years to get more money, the next thing you know, we're SOLO.
So I'll need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the, what it called.
The bridge preservation?
Bridge preservation.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
The course same sign.
I hear.
See, that's the sheet you have to fill out on.
Then that bridge should be good for 20 years.
Oh yeah, you'll get 30 years, yeah. The girder's in a really good condition, so.
So that would be Tanner that certified that it was in a fire.
I don't know, why are you using a public box? Let's see, just see Buckville. So the application will go through January 1st, we're usually here in March if we get it or not. And then, yeah, we'll be off to the races for construction, so.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have to sign it too. Thank you, anything else?
Yeah. No, I think I'm good on my end, any more questions?
Well, we thank you for your time.
No, thank you guys, and we'll be in touch.
Alright, public input, Sherry?
Do we have an audit report?
Not yet, we have not.
I see.
Yeah. Okay. Highway Department, Tanner?
Fuel unleaded 304, ethanol's 276. Number one's 32, number two's 326. First, I gave you.
Danita moves to approve, accept the fuel bids. All in favor? Thank you all.
Yeah.
So I gave you them sheets.
Yep.
There, these are the rates I would like to go with for this year, we'll redo them or relook at them every year.
So when was the last time they?
I don't know when they were, but right now, like the blade is at $100 an hour. And so that's jumping up 70, I believe a loader was around 90. And the reason we do, we need to up them, is if we get ever, get female money or anything, they're gonna pay us for what we have wrote down on our rates, and they're pretty outdated, they're, they're close to doubling right now. Not saying they're right or wrong, but I max them out, so we can get the most money if something does arise. Otherwise, we'll get 90 bucks.
Township was good.
Yep. Talked to the township already, that's who we, the only ones we charge is the township, so. So anyway, most of them are wrote down there for what we do. I guess I'd like them, and that second page is just, anybody wants to look at it, it's our, it's our thresholds for the county, we're at 896080, that's how much damage we have to do in the county before we can declare a disaster. But the state is 1.6 million, so it has to go through them also, but if they declare us disaster, we only need $8,900 worth of damage, which is not very much, about one culvert. So I would like, I guess, to up them rates to that, if you're all good with it. That's, these are my suggestions, and this is maximum amount, pretty much.
Do I have a motion? What is that called?
Well, these are just.
When you're setting the rates here.
Equipment.
Equipment rental rates.
Make move to approved equipment rental rates.
And that's for outside, these are ours, right?
Mm-hmm. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And what was the actual, you made a motion for what?
Equipment and rental, rental rates to increase.
Not really rental, it'd be just to say.
Yeah, that's just what they call it.
Right.
Okay. Some of the stuff we've been doing last month, I guess, we're hauling gravel, because the weather's nice. Still getting the blade, we've done some back sloping. I'll show you some pictures here coming up. Working on a V-plow, rental tractor went back. That mower put away, working on a school bus snow route. That mower should be here in January, 2024 rates, cut a few trees. Mowed out a few ditches where we thought the weeds were tall and bad and doing some grant stuff yet, and working on some mining paperwork that just needs to be done. These are probably in the wrong order, but, so this is part of the back sloping project, so these are gonna be way out of order now that I think about it, but. So back sloping, does everybody understand what that is? Trying to get the ledge off the, by the field so snow doesn't come and dump it blows through. We took about foot to two foot off, off that ledge, and moving it back through the field. That was, should have been the first picture, but that's what it was before. There's the one that's about done. That's kind of the end deal. There's a big, I can't really see it, but where that REA pole is, there's about, about that much of a drop off and hopefully it helps. There, we're just putting gravel down, spread, laying out gravel. Must be about all the pictures I got. So that was, I don't know, a few of the projects we've been doing.
So they getting anywhere on his church road deal?
That's where.
Well, that's where, I think I got defense up and everything.
Yep. Got out, and we're doing another one. Finishing it up this morning, actually, I don't have pictures of it, but in another spot, and we're still hauling gravel.
We see a good buddy.
Tried to haul the rest of this week, or for the most part, anyway.
Yeah, it's supposed to be nice.
A few extra things done, we usually don't.
Did you do the work on the reice road that's out in there?
Knipfling started it and we finished it. Yeah, I hope the worst. No, they did, they did a lot of it too, they just tore the fence out, so I went and talked to him and we, we're actually up there the last couple days finishing now.
Thank you, Tanner.
Yep.
Please? Not a lot to report, the DOE, we're working on the sales and getting 2023 finished. I'll jump right to the weeds. We had a weed board meeting today. And present was Tanner, Brian Rodner, Dana, Danita, Rich, and myself. Just a quick recap of that, we reviewed some invoices. Board dues, South Dakota Weed and Pest Supervisor Association, those board member dues. Put a voucher in for that, that was approved. Another invoice we had was reimbursing the highway department for work on the spraying, time, fuel. There was a reimbursement for 3,300, I think it was. For the.
Quarter of some miles.
Yeah, 400.
That it off, that was good.
About 420 miles of spraying. Yep. So from that, I also put another reminder in for the Weed and Pest Conference, February 21st through the 23rd of 2024, that's in Spearfish. Spray truck upgrades, we moved into that, we talked about that. With what we've learned this season with our truck, we replaced some bearings and new joints and did some brake work. Got to know that truck a little bit, it's kind of deteriorating, also the tank. We've got a potential problem with the tank and that there could be a leak, there's some coming apart on the inside. With that being said, we discussed getting a new tank. And the goal or the aspiration was to new truck, the plow truck, for spraying in the summer. So if we replace the tank and retrofit our skid of sorts, we could update that, we discussed that. Douglas County just did that, or something similar, and I've been talking with them and Bill Walker and and we approved moving forward with a tank, possibly from egg systems.
The tank, let's see.
The tank and the saddle, about 2,500, 2,000. If we went with egg systems, CNR is also a supplier, they have tanks as well, so we can move forward with that, get some quotes. Our thinking is that we can use nozzles and lines and everything, what we already have. The mixing station, we still have that, it's not working right now, but we'll retain that, if we ever want to use it again, we can, but just tank mixing has been working very well, so. So we talked about that, that was approved. We also discussed and approved to leave the local noxious weed list as is, musk and plumless. That's good until 2027, as I understand. That pretty much concluded the weed meeting. And anything else, a little housekeeping issue, we had burners and heating and cooling in here. This unit that heats the south end of the courthouse, it sounds as though there's a fan motor that's shot. And there was soot marks up there, it must have got hot and it's conked out, it sounded like 1,500 bucks. I think to fix it, but that unit that does. I think to fix it, but, uh, that unit that does this office and the two bathrooms, um, that one, the thermostat calls for heat, but it won't kick on, so we finally had Burnison out to look at it and give us a rundown of the system, there's three units in this building, so we told him to order the fan motor.
Come in, did you get any satisfaction out of the, the weed deal?
I didn't come to the meeting, but, uh, I kind of knew what your mind thought was on it, so can't, can't talk to a good one. And kind of mentioned comment on this spray truck and stuff, somewhere this summer, we must have great common timing or something. You know, the, the kosher along the roads got out of control, so the spray must have been, and then the river was late, so it was a mess. So I don't know what happened there, but.
We got a different mix for, we talked about that today, too.
I called that guy and told him I didn't do nothing to it, and he changed in whatever, the chemical, I can't tell you what's, what he's adding to it, but he's adding something to it. And far as the mowing, yeah, I held off as long as I could, because I'm not mowing three times. Every other county does it too, and that's why, otherwise, I mean, shouldn't say you're wasting money, yes, you're right, that it was out of control, but I, I ain't gonna just go chase weeds either, you know? And hopefully this, this knocks that down, then there wouldn't have been an issue, it was the kosher that was the issue, and it made a mess of the roads, too.
Well, the weather's helping out, because we had early snow, and you had to push those upper finals around, and it was under over, it'd been a mess, but now you're driving down some, so.
Okay, um, anything else, Lake?
No.
Thank you. Deb?
Okay, um, the hospitalizations, we just kind of reviewed over those, if anybody would like to see them. You guys, you're more than welcome, but Steve's overseeing them, and I think, so.
They just, they just basically notices right now.
Yeah. So. Any more of this?
Student notices, one was, um, appears to be covered by other avenues in the area, and we think they haven't shown it somewhere. But they, they're just notices, they got a signature ten day.
Right, so, and the one has been past the ten days, and so the other one is, is pretty new, but I don't think that's gonna, so. I have those two, if the commissioners would like to look at those. Um, treasure auto report for October is good, we have not completed it for November yet, it's just been kind of a crazy.
Well, November's a big month in the treasury.
Um, just as a courtesy one, there was two alcohol licenses that they just from Loadstar and Crow Creek. Crow Creek just convenience store did just get it to me, so I will give that thousand dollars over to Janice, and everything should be good to go then. State is aware of it, the state has both of them, so I think they just sent.
We have a motion to approve convenience store. We did for the casino last month, we gotta do it for the.
Okay.
Okay.
And you've got the, you've got the resolution, you've got everything you need.
Yep.
Yep.
And I'll move that we approve Crow Creek convenience store.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side, thank you.
And then the other thing that I have here, um, Wayne and I kind of spoke with rural county, and I'll let you kind of take over from there, if that's all right?
Sure.
Okay. So with, uh, my rural county contract for law enforcement, um, we, I think I mentioned it to you before, but we haven't followed up. I have twenty five hundred dollars in my budget for administrative, or it's in my budget, it's other, but, um, what I budgeted that for was administrative fees for, um, my contract down there. They handle the teletype, um, I'm required to have a teletype or access to one, well, um, it's five thousand dollars a year, and I hate to spend that for no more than I use it, you know? I need it, but not like the other counties do. So what the state allows us to do is, is, um, rural county, along with the deputy contract, um, is managing my teletype. Okay, so that's, that's just short of five thousand a year, and so I figured if I paid ten percent of it, would be five hundred bucks. So that's five hundred of that twenty five hundred. Then, um, with the contract, it's also, uh, creates extra work for the auditor's office down there, um, with the billing of the wages for the deputies each month, or every two weeks they pay, so.
Mm-hmm.
They're doing that. So I figured, uh, five hundred dollars for the auditor's office. And then the, the secretary in the sheriff's office is the one who really catches the brunt of it all. She runs backgrounds for the state's attorney's office when they're prosecuting, uh, to find out what, what criminal history they have. Um, she runs all the background checks for concealed weapon permits that, um, I issue, and also, um, if I'm doing investigations, they run driver's license, license plates, all those things for me. And then she has to stay certified on that, which I haven't had the teletype since we've contracted, Droll County had it, not rural county. So I'm not certified anymore, I, I could go get certified again, but Leslie has to keep up that certification, and she has to keep up, uh, for audit purposes, every time you run one of these background checks, you have to have a log of it and maintain that for audit purposes. So I have fifteen hundred dollars, which amounts to about a hundred dollars for her a month, and the other five hundred would be their overhead costs for social security, Medicare, you know, the benefits. So that's where I came up with the twenty five hundred. They haven't billed us yet for that, but I think we should get it done before the end of the year, considering I've got you. The auditor, Pam, was up here, I talked with her, and she said, yeah, that would work for them, she thought, so. We'll have to present it to their commissioners again, the whole Thursday.
Is that what is in our agreement? Because I don't remember the twenty five hundred amount down there when we talked about that. I mean, I'm saying that we can't do it.
Yeah.
Is it in our agreement that we signed with?
That's, that's what I budgeted, no, we did not, otherwise, they, they, um, I think they agreed to provide services for us, but we didn't put down a dollar for it.
That's what I'm saying, we should reflect our contract that we have in to approve all of that.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it should be updated. Yep, I agree with that. It was just something that was kind of over, overlooked, I think, at the time.
Yeah.
You know, so. And what they do is put it into professional services through rural county, so then rural county would divvy it up, so it would just be a one.
Yes.
Thing for here, so it would just.
I just want to make sure our business is covered by that.
I think that, that it could be just a one time a year payment, we don't have to do this every month, you know, so.
So we, we need a, a motion for.
And just as far as the teletype, site's got one, too, right?
They do, mm-hmm, yep, but it works well here, because if I have the tribe do it, then our state's attorney has to go to the tribe and get it done as well.
No, I'm just asking, asking about access.
Yeah.
And as far as you people have had these people and having these background checks, I don't know, how many licenses on concealed weapon licenses I just sold this year?
Um, it's down.
Just periods, just periods.
Yep, it's down because the state no longer requires you to have a permit, but it's surprising how many people still come in and get one. I did three in the last two days.
So we don't do background checks for them then?
Oh, yeah.
Why, just like you said it was down, and we don't.
Well, the state does that, and you fill it out, and then you send it in, and the state does the background check.
See, then that's something that's taken.
Oh, that's federal.
We do the background check.
Oh, we do it?
Yep, okay, so if you come in and ask for a concealed permit for me, we fill out the form.
Right.
Okay, and instead of me doing it right here, I send it to Leslie.
Oh, okay.
And when she can do it, then she does it, emails me back that they either pass or don't pass. If they don't pass, then she sends me the history that excludes them from being able to get one. Okay, so then when they pass, it comes back to me, I send it off to the secretary of state, and they fill out the laminated card.
Okay.
And keep the record.
Yeah, one thing, and I do know, because I work at Farnco where we sell guns, and if you have that, we don't have to do a federal back check on you, or background check.
And that's a lot of the reason people come in, so they can buy a gun and a win instead of having to wait.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there any other value to it, I, I should know this, but I don't, is there a value to it in, uh, if they travel, having that?
In a few states, our permit is recognized by other states, then that's a regular permit, there's also an enhanced and a gold permit, which require you go get a little training, certificate from an instructor, and then that allows you to go to a lot more states with your concealed weapon. And you can get that right off the secretary of state's website, if you go there, and, uh, you can see what states honor or permit, what kind of permit they honor.
But in South Dakota, you don't need nothing.
You don't anymore.
No, no, I'm TikTada.
Grandbabies get guns now.
The only thing, uh, if you go to buy a gun, they'll do a background check, so you can't just walk out then and there.
Sometimes you can, and the next time it'll be five days.
Right.
Depending on how long the background takes.
It's, we've got a federal deal we fill out on the computer, and you might come through in two minutes and say, yeah, we can sell you the gun, and somebody else might come through, and they'll hold it for five days, and we can't, you can't walk out with it. One guy we found, and, and a lot depends on the last name, how common it is, um.
Makes your residence, how long.
And some people don't want to put their social on it. That makes a huge difference, if you put your social on it or not, so, it's, it's, yeah. But we need a motion to proceed with the.
Order pay that?
Yeah.
Is, is that gonna be a two thousand twenty four, or do two thousand twenty three?
Two thousand twenty three.
Are you gonna put something in writing, though, so that we have something to pay off, right? Because we need something more than just a motion here, in some kind of.
They'll send us an, they'll send us an invoice, and then you'll, you'll probably approve it at the next meeting.
Okay.
The voucher, the voucher.
Okay.
It'll be here before the end of the month?
Yeah, Pam, we'll get it to me.
We have one more meeting.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, Deb, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
And are we gonna amend that motion then, or resolution, or our contract with them, because we approved that again in January, you know?
We can get that in there, Pam, Steve.
Yep. Yeah, um, they draft, they send us the contract for a little thing, and we just change it after that.
Yep.
Once it, uh, then they'll have to approve it, too.
It's that time of year, I guess, are you done with that part?
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It's time for that memorandum of understanding with the four H group. And if you guys approve the memorandum of understanding, then we can, I have to have you sign it.
All right.
The end. And that's just our newsletter.
I'm moving to approve the memorandum. How much is it this year, same?
It didn't.
Is there an increase?
I don't think there was an increase, I think same as last year.
Yeah.
It doesn't tell us what it is.
This is, does it say it on there, I guess it's been so long ago that I. I think this is just a memorandum of understanding, saying that we're gonna have.
That we'll have it, this doesn't entail any money.
So we don't know if.
Uh, yes, it is, hold on. SGSU, your part, payments must be made by the thirty first of March. For the calendar year twenty twenty four is twenty five hundred twenty dollars. Youth program advisors, so that's. Yep.
That's about what it is.
Yeah, so, anyway.
I'm going to approve.
I already did.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll have you sign that, and then. So next thing was executive session, I don't know if there was.
Let's, um, take a minute.
Okay.
You ought to tell about Dulce.
Oh. Okay, uh, we had a special meeting, um, uh, the other night, I can't even remember. First, anyway, um, Janice is gonna be, need to be gone intermittently for some personal things, and, uh, we need to have somebody in, and we have, uh, approved to have Dulce in at twenty five dollars now, she'd cover for, for her, so.
Everything's good, you don't have to say the. We need to have her sign a.
Confidentiality.
Yeah, I know.
Well, that whole thing that we.
Yeah, yeah.
She don't have to stand up here. I can add sense to, um, you.
No, because she's not.
You'll get a blank one, you need to have her get in, sign it.
So you, what you're doing is a contract, like we do contracts to everybody else, right?
I, I wasn't doing that right now, what I was doing right now was getting her this whole thing signed, just like you signed that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have copies of those, too.
You have those anyway.
Yeah, and I have copies of the contract, I thought we were just in the.
Yep, for your simple contract.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Going to executive session.
What's the date?
One forty six.